All right, welcome to the July 9th, 2024 Planning Board Meeting of West Baffney. I'm Gabriel Woodning, Chair.
Gabriel Williams, Jerry Mitchell.
And that's it, so we're calling to order. We've established a quorum, amendments to the agenda. Any?
No.
All right, then we'll just jump into our first applicant, which is James and Sarah Jocelyn for a subdivision of Mountain Road. And could you just say who you are?
Yeah, sure thing. Kevin Clark from Site Lines, representing the Jocelyn's. And I'm also working with their son Scott.
Okay.
Who's sort of managing this one, but we have authorization from him in that part.
Okay.
So are there any full-size plans that should be available?
Yeah.
I just need to... I've got everything, the plans, not much, I mean, some thoughts, but I can't breathe it.
Yeah.
Is there... Oh, there's a... Okay, there's the last one.
Do you want me to go through the specifics, then you can ask some questions or you want to...
Well, ask, you know, tell us what you're asking for, and then they can describe the highlights, and then go, you know, ask your questions where you've got some questions.
Okay, sounds great. Okay, and I'm gonna sort of point to the board here. I'm very visual. So we had a 10.9 acres on this side of the road. The Jocelyn's on both sides of the road. Since it's the west side, it was... The road was there before subdivision law was in effect, so it's two lot, you know, it's considered two different parcels for subdivision law. So the west side, we want to subdivide the 10.9 acres into three lots. The smallest one is 3.2 acres. They well exceed the road frontage, the shore frontage, and... You know, we're still here for a sketch plan, but what we've done, and we've tied the project into State Plane ordinance and got the LiDAR from Maine GIS. So we've locked that in and then done some field checks on the elevation. So we've got the real two-foot contours out there. But, you know, we're not proposing any new roads. It's basically three-lot subdivision with the existing frontage. There's good driveway entrances for all three lots. And we've had a preliminary soils evaluation, and we hadn't had the... When they looked at that, they walked the whole site and said they were adequate sites out there. But we hadn't had the lot lines like it, so they weren't sure exactly where they were. So they didn't find the test pits, but we'll do that for preliminary submission out of the test required for sketch anyways, isn't it? Test pits aren't required for sketch, correct?
No.
Okay.
The rest circles on the plan, does that represent?
Oh, those were, those were just proposed. When we walked the site, it was a layer I left on, actually. When we walked the site, we had just sort of said, this looks like a good building site, and we just marked it on the plan. I was supposed to shut those off before I plotted it.
We already have one of them.
Yeah, so yeah. So we've got the three sites, and those are three proposed driveway locations and three, you know, just good-sized home boxes. They're not really any design associated with them. Just really set in there to show that you can fit a home on the lot where the contours are pretty favorable. Or you could set them a little further and put, you know, big daylight basements or something like that facing the shore. So there's quite diversity on these sites. We've had the wetlands looked at. There aren't any internal wetlands on this, just along the shoreline on this side of the road. And really, look at that, some of the big items for a sketch plan. I mean, we're gonna clean up those soils, get those dug for each site, and be ready to submit in the near future for... Even though we don't have a road, we still have to do a preliminary filing, is that correct?
I think that's our...
Procedures, yeah. So we'd be ready to turn this around as soon as we've got that data back and submit for the preliminary plan.
On this one, on the cove side?
Yeah.
Is this dotted line?
That's the 75-foot setback, yeah, okay. Where's that line? It didn't show up too good with the contours, but you can see it along there. So we showed this front side and the shoreline setback.
Was a lot of elevation up there, huh?
Oh, yeah. More so on the other side. There's one spot up there called the eagle's nest. You can, you can, you can get there by hoof in a place. It's a good workout.
You mean on the other side of the road?
On the other side of the road, yeah.
Isn't that owned by the same people?
Owned by the same people, yeah. Yeah, we've surveyed both sides for that. Really, those are my big points for the, for sketch plan. We tried to give you as much information as we could. Really, a lot of these maps were key things we'd put in the next application, but I figured we'd give you as much information as we can.
Sure.
But at this point, that way if you've got questions, let us know, and we'll come back and do our best to answer them. Okay.
Jonathan, did you have any thoughts or comments? Have you looked at it?
Yeah, I looked at it, and I had him probably with him here.
So have you, any thoughts, any thoughts on...
Pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Yep.
I, you know, I was looking at the small plan, so I may, I may have a situation, but, you know, because of fluid and sketch plan, it's just, that's what it is.
Yeah.
We're beginning, and I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think what we do at this meeting is we'll, is just give some general guidance and then schedule a site mark if we decide. Do we, do we need to have a site mark, Jerry?
I don't think so, do you?
I, well, it does start in the...
No, I mean, I know we can have one, right? If we decide, right?
Well, I'm not sure it's optional.
Oh, really?
It is optional, okay, good.
And I'm fine with the one, like, the last one we did was that one, Anthony Keyes. We went and walked that.
Yeah.
And that one was, that one was pretty complicated, I think, but this one seems pretty straightforward, but I'm willing to walk it out.
Yeah.
And you said, have been there?
I'm familiar with the property, and like I said, I met with...
Okay.
And we, who was the owner's son, wasn't it Bruce?
Yes, Scott.
Yeah, so Bruce and Scott, I know, it was disgusting.
So... Okay, let's see. On the, somewhere you're gonna reference here, at a little table, that the shore frontage you might need and the road frontage, if you need.
Yes.
And you've probably talked with Jonathan about this already, but I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the, you need 200 feet of road frontage?
Okay.
I mean, on that, what I'm looking at is on page 29 of the...
Yeah, I wonder if that was...
Rural residential, and I see road frontage required is 200. And you've got in your table, and I don't know if there's any, I haven't added things up and so forth, but you've got in your table number 175.
Yeah, I see that.
So you only need that 200.
200, yeah.
And... And on your legend, you show, you know, what the utility line is supposed to look like, utility forward number, and then on the plan, it looks like you used a U?
Yes.
So...
I can update that.
Show either one of that, that's all. And... And on your, on your plan, each lot, of course, you'll have to show the shore frontage and the road frontage.
Yes.
And you can do that on, with a tie line if you want, you know, and so forth. And the, the dam you're using is the Maine GIS, but is that, is that average tide height or is that based on mean high water or mean low water or... Because I was looking at the, you know, you've got a heavy dark line on...
Yeah, and that heavy dark line is what they call...
Maybe just label what that is.
Sure.
I mean, is that, is that like an average high water?
Well, it's a, it's what they call the hat, which is the highest annual tide.
Yeah.
And that's published by DEP, so that's what we usually use to calculate setbacks from. But we can also do the vegetation line, which actually, in many cases, is a little bit different, which you wouldn't think it would be, but...
Well, I think people in the D Gen, they like to have everything, including in front of their house, you know, like the mean low water or...
So that...
100 yards or whichever comes first, kind of, you know, so that, yeah.
Sorry. The hat is, is what again? Highest annual tide, and that's around six, six, I think, I'm...
Six-six, yeah.
I mean, six is 6.8.
Well, for mean low water, it's 1.6 from low.
From low.
From low, let's measure it from the average low tide. I just did a permit a couple years ago, so...
For me, average low to the line...
If you were to come up and check upon a, on that line, they're gonna go by that line.
And how do they establish, just for personal, I just want to know, how do they establish that line?
They've established it, they put a publication out that has the elevation, and while it's for all, there's a different elevation because it changes along the hills, and as you walk the rivers and so forth, it changes. So they put it on the same dam as State Plane, so we just go out and tie in the GPS and transfer that over. And what we do is we tie in their LiDAR data, and then we ground truth it, but the LiDAR is within, within tents.
And then the flood, the flood, the flood zone?
Yeah, you guys, or SAGO, so you've got the updated flood map, and that's also tied to that saving.
Which I think is like tents, that's how, right?
Yeah, that's right, tents. And that's what the dark line, when there is the flood zone.
Okay.
I shouldn't have had that.
Is that from the average heights of tide or average low tide, or what's the 10?
The 10 is also based on that GIS data, which is the national data of, from 1988 is the vertical data.
What's zero elevation on that dam? Is it high tide, low tide?
Zero is probably about six feet underwater.
At high tide? I'm just trying...
Well, the, I mean, that elevation is not really tied to the tides.
Okay. Well, when we think about flooding, we think about how much the tide's gonna come up.
Yeah.
So anyway, I know the DEP, Jerry, uses 11.6 as the highest annual tide, and that's from the average low tide.
That's from, okay.
So that's 11.6. I did a permit for a brother, and I did one for me, and duly recorded them with Jonathan.
And what was, what was the flood we had this, this past year?
That was like 14.6 maybe?
Yeah, I think 14.6, yeah.
So I don't know if the DEP's gonna, you know, adjust that things, but this is when you apply for a DEP permit for WAF or GAW or something like that. That's, that's what I, that was my experience. So I'm really not sure still which, how that relates to the tide.
I'll check into that.
And just so it's clear, what your boundary is on the plan?
Sure.
That's, that's, that's the outline. And... So... And I just want to ask her about clearing, what you, the planning is for clearing and how that's handled. Is that, is that something you just reviewed with them, John, Jonathan? You know, when they go after, do they have to show the clearing areas on these or just... When they get the permit, then they'll see you and...
If it's within the shoreline overweight zone, yeah, I'll need to see what the clearance is gonna be, because it's limited.
Actually, it looks like, oh, okay. Anywhere in the shoreline zone, but that's 250 feet?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Okay. So... Yeah, that line will kind of go right down through the lots.
Yeah, it does. It's kind of faint on this one, but the 75 isn't it?
Yeah.
I'll do a better job, label it with that.
Oh, also on your, on your plan, you show Azvek as the abutto to the south.
Yeah.
But on the, on the people can notify, in the records, you don't show Azvek. You show, I think Jones Trust maybe?
Is that, is the, is the abutto before you did?
One dash one, yeah.
Yeah, to the south.
I think that's the, the new one. John, is that where the shed is now?
I'm sorry, I'm not...
I was just curious, the abutto before was the, I was just trying to eat my bearings.
Yeah.
Is where that, where that new shed is?
I can tell you what probably happened. We probably put these abutters on the plan before April 1st, so we probably made that list after April 1st.
Yeah.
So they sold in the last year, they get updated in April, which they might have been updated a week.
Which I think...
Digital research.
I think Azveks have owned that for...
Yes.
10, 15 years.
A long time, quite some time.
So I'm not sure just where your list came from.
Well, I see this one is one dash one, not one dash one A, so I'm gonna...
So you just need to include the Azvek as one of the abutters that's on, on your list.
Yep.
And I'm not sure who, where John and Russ are. Yeah, it's on the other list, the last, the last name?
Mm-hmm.
I'll keep following that. Okay.
I was thinking there's some reason you had to have the abutters who are across the street.
Oh, you do.
Am I wrong?
Yeah, you do need to list them, get notified and...
And maybe look at their map as well.
But that's...
Sure, yeah, that's the...
That's James and Sarah Jocelyn, that's all it is.
Okay, you got it on the list?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I guess I just...
But it's not shown on the plan.
No, but I can show that on the plan, yeah.
And the, the, the budding owner actually is gonna be bound on the plan.
And that's gonna be them anyways, right? They're across the street, the abutters, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, so, okay. So I suppose you could, if we don't feel a onset obstruction is necessary, you could, you could hold on that, so that they know, by the way, you can do that. And then, what's his next step, to come back to the next meeting with a, with a preliminary plan?
Yeah. And once you've made this first, and that's 22 days ahead of the meeting again?
Yes, okay.
Which is next week.
You're almost there.
Yeah, but it's next week, right? Next Friday?
I have to...
Uh, shoot, it'll be off, it'll be Monday.
Yeah, Monday.
Does it, yeah, we have to do public notices and get a newspaper, and it just all takes a while. So, yes. But you're, you're almost there, I think, but...
Yeah, that's, we'll clean up, yeah. I'll make sure we get the test pits on there. Might have to call Jerry, but...
Yeah, it's pretty, I mean, I'm sure you've been through the auditions, it's pretty straightforward, submissions and so forth, and boundaries, who must need it, and, and all of those things. But I agree with Jonathan, it's very straightforward, it's...
Yeah, so it'll be August 6th, it's first Tuesday.
Oh, that'd be the second.
Second meeting.
Second, oh, okay, that gives me...
Second Tuesday.
Second Tuesday. So December 13th, so 22 days, so we're gonna... The 22nd, so we do the 22nd. Oh, that's, that's really good. I know you're familiar with, we want to mention the roof, but if you want to give me a call or anything about that, or when, when we go over it. So sure then.
It doesn't matter, I'm just curious about the CEO of the Site Lines, is his name Brain or is it Brian?
It should be Brian.
Oh, okay, I was hoping it was Brian.
Brian Smith?
Yeah, Brian, good catch.
It's Brian on the other places, but...
Yeah, that was just... That was me or me fat friend Brian?
Well, I, I have a...
I have a, I can't spell cat. We, we keep telling him we gotta find him if he doesn't run spell checker.
Sometimes...
I'm gonna slip him through on that.
Yeah, I'm a pretty bad spelling cell. Sometimes, sometimes it's so bad spell checker won't find it. I'm just writing some personal notes myself. When was the big, when did we have a big monster tide? Was it 23 or 20, when was that?
January 13th.
January 13th.
Well, actually, January 16th was the...
There was two.
There were two, so that was on a Saturday.
Was the first one higher?
No, second.
The second one was?
Second one was, but the first one was more damaging because there was more wave action.
Yeah.
Well, depending on where we were.
Right.
But, yeah, yeah.
I think the first one got higher where we were, but I think that's because of the wave action.
Yeah, I think the other, the first one, that was on Wednesday. And who was the 13th?
Somewhere right around there, it sounds right.
I just think it's personal notes, but, look. We'll all forget it here for 10 minutes, not less. All right, so should I make a, will we make a motion, Gabriel?
Yeah.
Motion, are you, are you good here?
We can, are you guys gonna wave the, the site walk?
Okay, yeah, you wanna...
Motion now?
Yeah, so I'll make a motion that we wave the site walk, so we do the simplicity of the application and the thoroughness of it.
All right, that's two on favor. Aye, that's unanimous. So we're gonna wave the walk through. In the plan, this case, do you know if they're planning to sell or to build or...
Yeah, we need to see. Yeah, we'll see if they're... So when do we schedule a public hearing? Or could we be that also, John?
We're about to have a public hearing.
Yeah.
We can do it, we can do it right before the meeting, like we've done in the past, right?
Yeah.
But probably after the preliminary.
Yeah, that's... I'm sorry, I'm not doing it, but that's what a lot of towns, so they have, have it first and then have the final at the same night.
Right, so we do the public hearing and the final, yeah, I guess we have the same night. I think we've done that before. So we could have a public hearing again?
Five thirty.
Not six, and the meeting's at six or five.
Yeah, yeah.
That thunder?
All right, the meeting...
Oh, wait, no, it's not.
Is it raining up there?
Yeah, it's pretty good, it's got the thunder, it's very dark.
It's wet.
My old love's not gonna be happy. She doesn't like thunder.
Yeah.
She was freaking out this afternoon, I guess. There wasn't around here, but she could sense it way off.
So do you want to make a motion, Jerry?
Okay, so we'll make a motion for, for approval of the sketch.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm making a, making a motion to approve the sketch as presented.
Okay, second.
All in favor? Aye.
Okay. And so you're gonna move along as soon as you can?
Yeah, I'll get somebody...
So we'll see you in the next meeting.
Working on this, and we'll get turned in in a couple of weeks for the, and be here for the August meeting.
Okay.
And hopefully spinning around for the September meeting as well.
Yeah.
Great.
Well, it looks pretty straightforward.
Okay, great. Appreciate your time.
Do you have any other questions or anything else?
No, I don't think so at this point. I mean, that, that was some of those procedural things where I wanted to make sure I had it, because we didn't have the soils yet, but if you don't need to, I didn't think we're going for sketch, but they are required for preliminary, correct?
Yeah. Yeah, and stats on page 78 is pretty, right from one of the procedures, pretty, pretty... And the submissions and their bar, and then there's the final one, gaps begin on 83. Now, you won't need anything of DEP or...
No, no, these two, no. I mean, if somebody wants to put their, their dock in, they're gonna have to go through that firmity process. If they want block, we're not gonna do that. If they actually need that, I don't know, there's...
At low tide, is that tidal? I mean, or is it mudflats? You know?
I think a little of both. I think there's a channel up in the middle, but I think close to shore...
So if you ran a flow out and sent on the mudflats?
Yeah.
So that means they won't need an easement with a state, because they're sitting presumably on their own land in front of a house for a while.
Yeah, unless they go, wanna go up to a low low tide.
Right. So, now, we're supposed to ask you about the cost of subdivision and so forth, but you had not even, there were no thoughts on that.
Not, no thoughts, no advantage for us or the town really on three lots. I mean, if there were more lots and we could, and we had to build a road, then that might make, might, might make more sense, but... Okay.
They're supposed to talk about that.
Yeah, no problem. Yeah, and some, and sometimes ordinances, I mean, Hartswell and Free Court, you actually have to do an inventory beforehand of all the environmental constraints, and you, you have to give them two concepts. You have to give them a traditional lot concept and a cluster concept.
Correct.
Yeah, you don't have to do it, but you have to show them what it would look like. You can still choose what you want, but they require that you, at least go through that process.
Richmond just went through something real bad. I don't know if you're familiar with condemning in Richmond, but they...
But they turned, they, they turned it down, didn't they?
But like, it was like a year or two, I think it was almost two years, you had to do a cluster play. You had to do the cluster, like, for years, everybody used to original subdivision, and then somebody caused something in the code, and then for about two years, they had, you had to do a, you had to do one massive septic, one well, and it made no sense, and then they, I think, like you said, I think they reversed it. I'm not sure, it was just crazy for a while.
I, I didn't want to interrupt your earlier, but you'll, you'll have to have your site analysis, and show the test pits for that, that next step.
Okay, yeah, don't, we'll have that.
Okay, all right. You're good?
I'm good.
Very good.
Everybody, we go home.
Well, before we go home, we have to get to the public. I think, is everyone good?
I appreciate you putting the public at the end. The Brunswick City Town, or the Town Council, they put it at the beginning. And if there's a hundred people there, they, they only get to speak for three minutes, but they can all speak for their three minutes if they want to. And people that actually have pending business have to wade through all of that. I think you would, if you put that last, you might cut down on some of that nonsense.
Do you have a package of these, John?
I think there's one right here.
Yeah, 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 okay. So this is only, I took the plan out of this one, so, um.
Yeah, I think we get this seven or 10 or.
So this one was.
There's one on the left.
That's okay.
This is our waste.
All right, good. Sorry.
Thank you very much. Have a nice day, so we'll see you next month.
I don't think people know this because we're not sure how. You see, it's, it's, I know emails from her, is she still helping us out?
What is it?
But is the, I saw emails from her, or this, her name was on the signature of her. Is she still helping us out?
No, she's, she's gone.
Oh, okay. So.
This one here is.
I have to approve these for, for someone just to.
Untouchable.
Of course, I guess.
They can, they can say we're back, and we'll make sure they get to where they need.
Okay.
Where they need to go. Yeah.
All right.
Yes, I believe so.
So would be two candidates, uh, is that all done in, uh, executive session? The, uh, I'm gonna keep you sharing the names of those two.
I, I believe it was.
It was, it happened exactly.
Yeah.
Fine.
I'm not a hundred percent sure, I wasn't here, but.
Uh, I'm gonna dial it out.
Yeah.
There it is. Just kind of rolling the windows up.
Did you see that? You ever saw this too?
Yeah.
What's that? Oh, you were coming down, is that the?
This is just the, well, typically, I don't know if this is for, I mean, do we fill these out for sketch plans? This is the approval sheet that we typically go through, and I was just.
I don't think we do for a sketch plan, do you?
If, if I were the chair, I would have one for all three.
I would, I would think we would and just say, for, just for a sketch.
It's, it's in the ordinance, they have to be here for it.
Yeah.
Just improve, skip, approve.
It proves that it happened.
Okay.
And today's, what did I say?
Um, ninth. Yeah. Wow, but it's dark.
Yeah, it's raining down too. Not real high, but it's raining.
Wanna take a look at?
Yep. Yep, I like it.
Good.
Yep.
Oh my God.
Check it out, sorry.
Holy, I grow. I have to shut the windows.
It's time to be inside.
Oh, that's big drops.
Interesting. I can just.
Can you slide that?
Done.
All right. Next is setting a date workshop with Max Johnston for those changes.
Well, today's the night, and next week is gonna be the 13th. It's almost depends on what the max is available to use.
Right.
But we've, um, kind of kept Tuesday night as the date for planning board to do business. So maybe we wanna look at, um, like the 23rd or 30th?
Oh, this one? I've gone 30th. 23rd. What if we, what about the?
You know, doing the same night at a, a regular meeting?
We could, we'd do the 13th, and we'll open it also up in the week after, and the 20th.
How's that for you?
Maybe five.
So we might get five o'clock, or?
Uh, maybe, maybe five thirty.
So then have our regular meeting at? What's the time of the meeting again?
I don't know, it's at least an hour.
Yeah, you can get some time. Whatever dates that you, you put together, I can run that by you.
Yeah, and I'll find a meeting another night, or another, put up the, I don't know, you guys.
How about, um, what about the week after our next meeting for 22nd?
Sure. Yeah. It'll be fine. So you wanna shoot the August 20th at six? Six works best for you, Jerry, doesn't it?
Um, if it's a Tuesday, I can, I can make it five, I'm pretty sure it'll be five thirty.
You depend?
I don't really.
Is that mine?
We probably do.
All right, so we're thinking August, what?
20th?
20th.
Yeah, so, okay, August 20th, meeting next.
We, you can just ask him if it's August 20th, all right?
Yeah, August 20th, I'll. I'll ask you if that works.
Yep.
August 20th at six.
Yeah, why don't we just keep the same time?
Okay.
Wow. Oh my God, I can put a way at home.
I know, I know.
It was so nice out when we left. Um. Oh, man. Okay.
So now we're gonna wanna think about the four little minutes?
Yeah. So first is May 7th.
I looked a little over, I didn't see anything. Everything was fine.
Was that the 14th through Jim or the, or up to the?
Yeah, I looked over 14 too.
Okay.
And, uh, I didn't, I didn't. There you go. I didn't see any.
There was the, um, a bit about the traffic. I know they explained it. But what we have it, what it is currently, as well, and then we look to the.
On page three, right here?
Yeah.
Just above 1.07. We talked about that, um.
I was just thinking of.
And then in, in the next meeting, 14.
Is that where they, um, express what it, what it currently is, they're reading. I believe it was C. That was the thing I was looking for, but I didn't see, was mention of that, of what the traffic currently is, which was that C level, I believe.
I'm not sure if you read that article.
All right, we look at the last page, I mean, page, um, is, um.
Oh, here you go, yes.
Statute of Mr. Mitchell.
Yeah.
Asked if there was a method, whether you can ask him.
Yeah. But it did, yeah, I guess there's no mention of that C level though. Because I'm just thinking down the road in two years.
Mm-hmm.
Make it simple for people to look at, right?
Yeah. Because we talked about D and E, which are the standards, and I just wanna be clear that it was presently a C, and that we.
There is something in there about that. Let me, let's look a little more, huh? Let's take a few minutes, whatever the hell you.
I mean, like, it's, it's touched upon, like you said, on the last page.
It's, we heard somewhere.
Did you remember seeing that?
Yes, and that's, that's, we hear, I'm not sure that's, it's actually continued on. Okay. Think we have to go to Q and. Four.
Oh, yeah, there you go, okay.
So, um, yeah, you got it, right here.
I missed that.
Mr. Williams moved second by Mr. Williams to approve the findings of fact as amended to include the site visits. At two in four years, and that the level of service does not drop below a service level C. And we're approved.
Which, what area? The last one on the backside.
On June 4th, the last minute.
Yeah.
And then in the findings, maybe right over there, look at the findings of that, okay? So the findings of that, that you're gonna sign, Gabe.
Yeah.
Right here.
Yeah.
Right here. It says, um, the board voted two to one in favor that this standard has been met with the following conditions. That standard being, uh, the board can agree to an independent traffic review by Gore Power. Randy Dunn from Gore Power concluded that the most recent traffic plan developed by the applicants, traffic engineer Diane from our Bureau, comply with accepted industry standards. Then it goes on, the board voted two to one in favor that the standard has been met with the following conditions. Two in four years from the date of approval of the site fund, the town's engineer, at the applicant's expense will provide the planning board with an updated traffic review based upon conditions at the time. In the event that traffic in the vicinity of the project declines to a below level of service D.
No.
The town, that town's traffic engineer will make recommendations of need improvements to the traffic management design and infrastructure, including the possible reduction of allowable pockets.
It's supposed to be lower than C or D or below. That was what it said here in the back of that, June. June 4th, Mr. Williams moved second by Mr. Williams to approve findings of facts to amend and include the site visits. At two in four years, and that the level of service does not drop below a service level C.
Right, so that's, that seems correct. And that was under. And I think it's that first debate there.
This one here?
No.
Yeah.
Okay. I thought we would, I thought he understood, the attorney understood that, so I'm not sure why that, uh, came out like that.
So, how do I, the, I have some, some reasons I'll give this back to. Do we have a clerk, or is there no clerk?
We just make a motion to approve the minutes, right?
Well, this is, this is different, this is the.
Finding of fact, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
No, it's all good.
Well, no, I think we can, we can make a motion, well, I'll make a motion that we send this back to the attorney for correction to adhere to what actually happened at the meeting.
Right.
Should be a, should be a service all C and not low.
Correct.
And that's the, that's the, um, requirement in two years, four years, that's C or better.
Correct.
It's not less than C.
Yeah. And then it's.
So that's my motion.
Oh, seconded, and all in favor?
Okay.
You name it, Mr.? All right, so supplement this to.
So then I'll make a motion that we can, uh, that we approve the May 7th meetings as we're. Second. Any comments?
Um, that the May 7th are good?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's. That's fine, because, yeah. Um, so those are, are all in favor?
Okay.
All right, unanimous?
Okay. And then I, and I'll make a motion that we accept May 7th. And then I, and I'll make a motion that we accept, make the improvements, that's certain.
Alright, all in favor?
Are you good, but you, but you can pull my reading off, if, you can.
No, I went through.
We don't want you wearing this.
Before, and that was the only thing that I was trying to figure out, I didn't, I missed this.
And we have that in the June fourth. Meeting, yes. Does not drop below a service all C. So then, uh.
That was really interesting.
So then, uh, make a motion, June fourth meeting, that's.
Approved.
Approved.
Approved, all in favor?
Aye. Yes. And we should note that it does say in the June fourth meeting, that, um, that we did vote on that the two in four years will not drop below service all C.
Yes, sure.
John, you're in the minutes, this one.
Um, June fourteenth.
So the author of this, um, you okay with that, everything like?
Yeah, no, no, yeah, it's good. Did we, we voted on that one, too?
Yeah, seven fourteenth, and, and. And the author of this, probably did it to notice, uh, start the next meeting day on August thirteenth. And that, we can all make that date.
Is that the meeting just to meet with Max, or is that a regular meeting?
That's a regular meeting.
And then the next Tuesday, the twentieth, will be a Max meeting. Anything further?
Nope. Uh, actually, I do have a thing, um, there was a guy that showed up here that wanted to be part of the planning board. You got a number of that?
Yeah.
Like, should we try to get him to do it, I don't know what happened? Like, we were right in the middle of the corporate thing, so I don't think it was probably anybody thought it was probably a good idea to have him, but I mean, I think, you know, that was too bad, I think it'd be a good idea to have him.
Yeah, he said he was interested in wanting to come see a meeting, and I thought it was gonna be something to hurt about, but.
It's a question for Christine, I think, and, uh, the last time she said that this, like, boy had not acted on. I'm not sure if he's applied, or.
Right.
What the status is.
I don't remember his name, do you? It should be, think it would be in the meeting.
Should be.
Uh, but I don't know what meeting it was, to be honest with you. I looked through, I didn't see.
Yeah.
I don't remember what meeting it was.
Supreme two or three meetings ago.
Which we had.
Was it Jeffrey Reed?
Maybe.
No, because he's of, of the engineers.
Okay. So he's noticed, there's, uh, one on the phone?
Do you ever talk to Carly Young? She would probably remember off the top of her head.
I can ask her, yeah.
Maybe, if you would, um.
Yeah, I, I talked to her.
You could just ask her who, who the guy was, and we could try to, I think it'd be good to have.
If you watch this, contact your town hall.
Alright, so that's all I got, we can try to track him down, so that would be good, but, um, is that it?
I thought the motion for James, too. Um, do you have anything? Good? Second, all in favor of Germany?
Okay.